Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
We have special orders of the day, number 3A, the mid-year budget review. It's called 18 and 19. See you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. We are here today to start, really kick off, the budget process for fiscal year 1920. And the first step in that, at this point in time, this time of the year, is to go over the fiscal year mid-year review. So we're going to review general fund revenues and general fund expenditures by category, compare them to the budget, and where the estimated actual is, where we estimate that it will end the fiscal year. And we have reviewed this with all of the staff and with the Budget Standing Committee. And at this point, we're ready to go over it with the full City Council and take any questions that you might have as we're going through the presentation, and we're all here to answer them for you. And with that, I will hand it over to Maria Luisa Valdez, our Finance Director.
Good evening. So, yeah, we're over seven months into the budget fiscal year, and at this time, it's customary for us to review, as Brett said, where we are with our general fund revenues, our estimated actuals in comparison to our budget, our revenues, general funded revenues, and our general funding expenditures, and see if there's any budget appropriations for budget amendments that we need for revenues and expenditures. So first, we'll start off with general fund revenues. As you can see here on the screen, there's 598,000 of a positive budget variance in revenues. The majority of it is due to property taxes, sales and use taxes, and licenses and permits. Property taxes is due to secured property tax within this category. There's higher assessed valuations, which accounts for about 70,000 of the increase. The rest, the over 30,000, is also in this category, and that's due to real estate transfer taxes, since there's higher than anticipated sales. Sales and use tax has an increase of about 221,000. That, a majority of that, 134,000 of that is due to a one-time allocation that came from a corporation that was in the city for the third quarter of 2018, or like the first quarter of this fiscal year. And that accounted for 134,000 just for that corporation. That corporation closed in September, so we don't anticipate that for the rest of this fiscal year and even the fiscal years to come. So it's a one-time allocation. But we also experienced some stronger sales in business and industry, county pool, and restaurants in that category. Then, the highest one on here, as we go to the middle, is licenses and permits. In here, the primary reason for the increase is due to permit revenue. There's about 156,000 more in permit revenue due to larger projects and a larger volume in permit revenue. There's also an offset, though, to, since it's contracted for any, for building inspections. We have 156,000 more in revenue, but we also do have 50,000 more in development services expenditures. There's an offset, so it's still a positive offset that we get more revenue than we do expenditures. You know, then we see obvious increases there, pretty small. The one that I would like to note, just because it connects also with the expenditures, is charges for services here of 26,000. There's an increase due to an increase in field fees and also more projects. It's recreation revenue in, actually, it's just, for more programs. And there's also an increase of $12,000 more in salaries in recreation, and that's due part-time salaries, just in order to maintain those programs. Is, are there any questions with any of the general fund revenues, or anything else you'd like me to explain before we go on?
So on the one-time, kind of, money that comes in, like, the corporation that closed, probably can't identify who it is or what, but, well, I'll get that offline.
Right.
And then, license and permits. So, do we see any kind of, I know there's big projects going on, right, on Sausalito and on Brigham Way, but are there, do we see uptick in other projects in the, smaller projects like Home?
Yeah, so overall, we're seeing a lot of activity. It's not just in the larger brick-and-mortar projects that we're seeing, like the five plexes on Farquhar and the little brick-and-mortar wallet, but also just in the small items, a lot more just minor repair work, one, you know, the hot water change-out, HBC, minor electrical. So overall, we're seeing an uptick. But, yeah, it's not really one specific or two specific projects we saw last year with the hotel, per se. This is really just where in general it's up, and we just don't know how long it's going to last, of course.
Yep. And then, on the fines and forfeitures, I guess, those are probably restricted monies in terms of what we get to use them for?
So for that one, there's an increase, fines and forfeitures, and that's primarily due to parking fees, that there's an increase there.
And then, the last question I have on the utility tax, that decrease of about 26,000, a little less than 26,000, do we know what happened there?
Yeah, so, as we reported last year in our 1718, we saw that it was a decrease, but we didn't close the books until September of 2018. But we had already adopted this budget for 1819 in June. So there's kind of a delay. But if you really look at it for our projection, it really is in line with our 1718 numbers, our close numbers. So it's nothing different from what we reported from our last fiscal year. It's just more in line with that. We just didn't have that information until September.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. So we'll move along with the sales and use tax. This graph just illustrates how we've had a steady increase with our sales tax the last nine years. There have been some one-time allocations in the last years where we've benefited from that. But we still have an increase, even, you know, I highlighted them in lighter red, so you see the one-time allocations, but there's still been a steady increase throughout the years. It is important to note, though, we've already worked with our consultants for our sales tax, you know, their sales and use tax consultants, and for 1920, they provided us a projection, and it's a little lower than it is for now, just because, for this fiscal year, just because we got that one-time allocation. It's not something we expect. So for general fund expenditures here, we have budget savings of 131,000. It's primarily due to vacancy savings that we see in the police department and development services department. Police has over 200,000 in vacancy savings, even though here, net is only 80,000. It's offset by about 50,000 in overtime and offset with also vacation payouts, because there have been a lot of departures this fiscal year. So the net is 80,000. And then there's development services that has budget savings of 110,000, and that's also due to vacancy savings for not hiring the management analyst until seven years into the fiscal year. And then also, the director position wasn't filled until September of this last fiscal, this fiscal year, September 2018. There are also two budget appropriations that come forward in expenditures. It's city attorney of 35,540, and that is due to, in the first quarter of this fiscal year, there was litigation that wasn't anticipated and wasn't included in the budget. And then there's also a non-departamental. There's 25,000 that's a budget appropriation that we'd like to request, and this is for the homelessness contribution, and also pre-employment expenses that we, has an increase this fiscal year due to a lot of HR and pre-employment expenses that we had this fiscal year. Before we move on for budget appropriations, are there any questions with our expenditures? Any specific ones? I went over the large ones. Okay. So, out of, you know, the general fund expenditure savings, the men's locker room has seen, what we're recommending, that there be an appropriation for the policemen's locker room. It has seen two minor reconfigurations over the past 25 years. The current locker room suffers from a lack of air circulation, odors from the plumbing, and temperature control. The plumbing in the sinks, as you can see here, and the shower often fail and require repairs from the public works personnel or a plumber. The lighting is inconsistent, creating overlit and underlit areas. The tiles are impossible to get clean, and, you know, the carpet is really worn. The approximate cost to expand and remodel the policemen's locker room is 200,000. Due to the expenditure savings, there's a budget appropriation for your consideration to get out of the general fund savings to appropriate 200,000 for the policemen's locker room. And then, in addition to the men's locker room for the police department, the number one priority for recreation is fixing the roof at the community center. There was an emergency declared for the internal roof repair and to patch things up within. Then, after that, they found asbestos, and even underway, they found even more mold that had to be fixed, once we were, you know, in the scope of the project. So that had to be fixed. But then, really, to address the real problem of these leaks, their priority is to request an appropriation to replace the whole community service roof. So the approximate cost for that is 140,000. There's available funds in the park development fund, just because that has more restrictive of a use. So we have, we are requesting 43,000 to come out of that fund, and 97,000 to come out of the facilities fund. And there's sufficient funding in both those funds.
Is that roof going to cover the community center and youth center? Or does the community center?
I'll defer to our development services director for that quote.
So we've done preliminary assessment, and if there is no issue with mold within the community center, then we might have enough money to be able to do both. We'd like to scope out and go through the process to do, we've got two construction companies, one roofing company and another firm, and they're right in the 140, the 145 range for both estimates that came in. But again, we're, we are concerned that there could be some mold, but we won't know until we pull the roof off.
So, our main focus during mid-year is to go over the general fund, and that's what we mostly focus on, the revenues and the expenditures. But we also take a look at the internal service funds, the special revenue funds, capital project funds, to ensure that we have enough revenues to cover the expenditures. We find in the park development fund, though, that we need an appropriation, because there isn't enough revenues that we had budgeted for, and we're not expecting anymore for this fiscal year. So we have to reflect a revenue adjustment to reduce those revenues. We had expected 268,000, as you can see in the first half. This is what was adopted. 130,000 we had in a fund balance. 268,000 we expected in revenues. And then we had budgeted for 281,000 in CIP out of that fund. If we continue with that, and we've already, we're expecting only 80,000 and 472,000 in revenues. If we continue with those expenditures, there wouldn't be enough, and that fund balance would go into a deficit. So we're recommending there be decreases. So internally, we've discussed with recreation, and we're recommending the Labradet Park Playground and Equipment and Surface Project below of 140,000 be delayed to the next fiscal year until we do receive those development impact fees that were expected this fiscal year. And also, a reduction in the community center enclosure outdoor storage space. We had budgeted for 20,000, however, we've already spent 5,000, and that's all that's really needed, so we're reducing that. And that'll still keep us at a positive fund balance, and it won't get us to a deficit. And that is, so just the revenues are being reduced, and so are the expenditures. And that concludes...
If I may?
Oh, yeah.
So Labradet Park, really, is just going to get moved back a year when we get the Olson money, is that the...
Yes, so the development services director has been talking to the developer, and it is expected to come in into the fiscal year 2019, '20, and that'll be reflected in the budget as well. And so when those revenues do come in, we'll, we'll delay it, and it'll be a year delayed.
When do they expect to start building now?
So, our last meeting with them, two weeks ago, they, this summer, will pull permits for their model units, and at this point in time, they have not determined how many additional units. We've talked to them about, could be in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 units. So we're anticipating first quarter, between first and second quarter of 1920, to see, you know, anywhere from 50 to 20 units issued. So we have the revenue coming in off of all those units.
Okay.
The market really is going to dictate if there's going to be more than that. Olson shared with us that they've not, that sales have softened, that they've opened up a project nearby here in December, and they've yet to see a sale, so a little concerned. But they do expect to have models and a handful of units pulled sometime this summer. But we went conservatively on our position, and we said, let's just not even account for that this fiscal year, with the anticipation that August, September would be the...
And as we fine-tune, get closer to the adoption of the budget, then we'll have a better idea if we can budget for 100% of that project of Labradet Park or not, too, to answer that question as well. So we, if, if they aren't going to build as many units to give us that 140,000 in funding, then we wouldn't be able to do Labradet Park.
Okay, thank you.
And just a quick note with the Labradet, originally, it was in the 1920 CIP, but as budget and finance, we moved it to this year because we had the money in the park funds. And then, they went out to bid, and all the bids were rejected because it was over the 140,000, so it's kind of at a stall anyway.
I see.
So, it's...
So is that number going to be low in the long term?
Possibly.
Are we low now, what do I mean?
I don't know what they, I just know that we rejected all the bids because they came over that.
Also, the bids came at 180,000, so when we go back to CIP, we'd probably request for more.
Okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, here we have the budget calendar, per request of Councilmember Murphy. We split up the departments' overview between administration and police departments on April 8th, and the department overview of development services and recreation on April 15th.
There was one question, Councilmember Gross.
I was just kind of hypothetically thinking. I drove over Cerritos Street the other day, and in the Olson project, there's a lot of water. And so if we continue to get rain, maybe you talk to Olson about creating the Los Alamos Lake. Parks and Recreation can stock it with fish, and we'll get a little bit of a trade-off that way with the Parks and Recreation Department.
So here, we're recommending receive and file of the mid-year report, and approve the budget amendments to the fiscal year 2018, '19, as we discussed and recommended in the report and this presentation.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Excuse me. Approved budget amendments. Does that include...
I can do a quick summary for you. It's in the report. Refer to, oh, sorry.
It's, it's, okay, so it's on page...
Yeah, page eight and nine of the report. It details all the increases that are in there, that I've also discussed on here. It's, do you want me to go over them?
Please.
Okay. There's the general fund expenditure budget increase of 210 total. Well, this includes 35,000, I'm sorry. It would be 200,000 for the policemen's locker room, city attorney 35,540, and 25,000 for the non-departamental.
What page are you on, please?
Page eight of the report. Oh, not of the...
Staff report.
Of the staff report.
Were you asking what were approved, as far as expenditures?
Yeah.
So the city attorney, 35,540. The non-departamental expense, also an increase of 25,000. 35,540, 25,000 there. There's also, so this is for general fund, I'm just going over general fund. 200,000 for the policemen's locker room. That's it for general fund. For park development, we're asking of an increase of 13,850 for the mold removal that was already done. An additional for the roof replacement, 43,000 from here, but then also 97,000 from the facilities fund. And then, there's also a reduction in revenue here of, from 268 to 80,000. So there's a reduction of revenue of that, actually, that's on page nine. That's 187,928. And then, there's also delays, so a reduction in expenditures of 15,000 and 140,000. I don't have a summary, I didn't include a summary in here, it was in the staff report.
It's okay, let me get to my point. My point is this, we have some monies we didn't use, so now we have an option to do something with that. But we're selecting these two, these two items in the CIP without a staff report that shows us what all the CIP options would be. It's just like, these two have been selected. When I got started on the council, I spoke a lot about piecemeal budgeting, and what bad decisions that leads to. And I'd like to see this come back with a full staff report that shows all the options that are out there for the use of this money, and then let us decide from there. Not just throw something in front of us, that's a wrong choice of term, put something in front of us and then say yes or no. I'd rather see the big picture than, than just this little slice here. That's my concern.
We also have been discussing with the budget standing committee, and will continue to discuss capital needs in addition to these. So these are the capital needs that are more closely safety-related, that we've got a list, that the police department has prioritized. This was up at the top of that capital list. We can discuss that with the standing committee and bring that to the council as we go through the budget process as well.
Brett, that's my objection, though, is you're asking us to vote now to approve this, and we're not seeing the big picture. How can we vote, how can we vote on this? We don't know what else... Maybe there's 10 other items that we would prefer to spend our money on. We're not being given that choice. I just don't see how that makes any sense at all. I'd like to bring this back, if my colleagues agree, bring this back and with a full staff report that explains all our options, not just here's two options.
And look at all those capital needs for each community services, recreation department, and the police department.
Yes, and I noticed the calendar has CIP kind of late in the, it's down, not till May 20th. I mean, we could, we could move that up if we needed to, you know, wouldn't hurt, I don't think, but, I don't know, what has, how does everybody else feel?
So if I may, so I kind of, Mayor Protem, I kind of take that what you're asking is in the form of a motion, and I'm kind of agreeing with you in that in some regard, but, so if we take that as a motion to delay this, is there, I guess, a question, is there a second?
All second.
So we got a motion, a second. So as far as discussion, I'll start the discussion, if I may, a little bit out of turn. I'm not tracking with the math, because when I read this, you have a budget increase of 210, 540, but it doesn't add up, because the police alone is 200,000 of that, so it...
I apologize.
So I think, I think part of the reason why I support, you know, when we come to a vote on this, I would support the delay, is that I think you need to have a better summary that actually looks like math, and it adds up, because I'm reading the narrative, and I can't track, I don't understand it.
Originally, there was 150,000 for the men's locker room, so you'll see the difference is 50,000. So it was, the men's locker room was a remodel of 150 to 200, but it's 200.
But the recommended, right, of increase of 210, I can't get to that number with the, with the information given here, right? I mean, it doesn't add up. So there's some additional polishing of the report, I think, that would help, in addition to what Mayor Protem Murphy is asking for, in terms of what other choices might have been available that, you know, again, what are we not going to do because we're going to do these? All right, I think that's a fair question. But anyways, that was my comments, and I'll just kind of open it up, start with you, me.
I met earlier with the city manager and finance. I have a difficult problem at this point with the 200,000 for the police locker room. Not that it's not needed, not that it's not a safety issue. I'm concerned that we're embarking on a program to rehab and/or replace crumbling facilities. And in talking with the staff and the city manager, it needs to be done. We've gotten to that point. Yet, we still don't know what's happening, in my mind, to these facilities. There was discussion about potential lease, and I guess that's going to be discussed with the city manager when he goes to the P3 conference with, or with the Public Works and Community Development Department. Sometime back, we made a decision, because we were challenged at that time, is city hall for sale. If it is, then let's move forward on that course. We moved forward on that course, we got property evaluations, we had things going. I believe you and I served on a facilities subcommittee to determine what the actual needs were going to be, and we focused that on the 2035 general plan needs. And I still see we're in the same boat. We're kind of kicking this can down the road. We may have no choice in this, and that's kind of what the city manager was telling me. We're going to have to do it. We still don't have a clean discussion, a clean focus on what it is we're going to do. Are we going to be able to pursue leasing this land, building a revenue-producing building, i.e. a hotel here? If that's the course that we're going to go, then I think it's clear from the standpoint of what capital improvements or what Band-Aids we might put on. It's kind of like the roof at the community center. We're going to have to do something, but we've got to have a clear focus, I think, on the road ahead of what we're doing, and that's probably going to be a different discussion. If we get a clear path, then we know we're having to make these choices. Expansion of the locker room versus just, and rehab versus just rehab for the problems, I don't know, we've, as a group, have not discussed at this particular stage the options that were discussed with the standing committee, and I look forward to those discussions as we go down the road. It just, like Mayor Protem said, I don't think we've got the full picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just...
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
So I just want to understand the role of the budget and finance committee, because we did look at the CIP list, and we did look at that. So if we're going to rehash this as a council all over again, what's our role? Because that's what we took the time to do. We, you know, we took a tour of the facilities, we looked at projects that would affect the bigger good, AKA the roof at the community center and the youth center. We looked at, you know, one of the problems that we hear over and over again about, you know, retention and recruiting of the police department. And in talking to, you know, the powers that be at the police department, everybody went back to, you know, this is their home, this locker room is their home. You know, I've been on council for five years now. We have been talking about, what are we going to do with city hall? It's time that we make a decision. We've ruled out some options. I think we, we were told pretty clearly that the base is not an option, so we can rule that out. And we just need to make a policy. It's like, we're going to stay here, and we need to figure out what we're going to do, but we've been kicking this for five years now, and we've done absolutely nothing, and our facilities are crumbling more and more, which is making the rehabilitation more expensive because more mold is coming in, you know, and we, we can't be sitting here next year talking about the same thing. We've done absolutely no action. But we did look at the CIP, you know, pulled Labradet and did some other things, thinking this would be affecting the greater good of the city and the police department. And if that'll help keep a couple of police officers, then that's a good thing. And it is, if you toured over there, it's, it needs some major help.
Thank you for that, but, Councilmember Chirco?
Yeah. Not a lot to add beyond what Councilmember Hasselbrink stated, but I just agree. I mean, I don't see these as, particularly with the community center roof repair, I don't really see it that we have a choice at this point. It's gotten so bad, and it's, it's really almost an emergency-type situation. And then the police department locker room, I took a tour of it, and it's in really bad shape. I appreciate what Councilmember Gross is saying, you know, we don't want to pour money into something if we're going to go with a completely...
Tear it down.
Yeah, a completely different direction later on, but it's been years, and nothing's, you know, there's no plan to do anything else. Meanwhile, we're still using these facilities, our police officers are using this locker room, and it is a retention and recruiting issue, that locker room, a lot of the police department facilities are, but that one in particular. So that's it for my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, any other comments?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that the, I'm not saying that the men's locker room is not the primary need, but I'd like to know what the other choices were. If I, if we'd gotten a list with your recommendation, I think I'd be voting yes. That's what I'm saying, is in March, could we have a list of what, what else there is? What else could we be doing with the money, saying this is what you guys recommended, and then approve it then? But I don't like doing it blind, is really what was bothering me.
I mean, we've all got the CIP list from the budget, that hasn't... I mean, we've all got the CIP list from the budget, that hasn't changed, and so we literally went down and figured out, you know, this money, what can we use? But that CIP list we've had, that's part of our budget.
Yes.
And it's projected out 10 years?
Seven.
Seven years.
So that, that's what we started with, we didn't, you know, we didn't pull these out, we just, this seems to be already on the CIP list, the highest priority, to do something with these facilities before they get any worse. So I'm not sure, other than putting it in the staff report, putting the CIP list in there again.
Yeah. That's really what I'm asking for.
Okay, because I mean, we do, we do have that, we all went over the budget, so we do have that, so I didn't, we didn't even talk about in detail about supplying that as part of the staff report, the CIP list again.
Okay. All right, so, the other discussion? Go ahead. So, so the motion is to, to delay this and not follow staff, staff recommendation, and have it brought back at the next month. And again, my kind of concern is the way the, the math just doesn't add up, but that's the motion, and let's go ahead and put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So we have, I'll say three to two, I'll, I'll vote with Councilmember Hasselbrink. But I do want, it's going to come back for next month, so it passes three, two, dissenting Hasselbrink and Kusamotto. Please straighten out the math, and then append this CIP list to it. I do believe this standing committee is doing what we want them to do by looking at the top, the bottom racket stack of what it is, and I'm certainly would be those things that are most closest in terms of getting funded, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so it should be consistent. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, we do have one, there is one item on there, and we can bring back the list that both the police department and recreation and community services has developed, and, and append the CIP to the list as well, and discuss it in March. We do have the one item that we've already done the work and already need to pay for it, is the mold, additional mold, the $13,000 plus, that's also in the staff report. If we could get approval to do that one tonight and bring back the rest of the list-
So move.
-the rest.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Gross to pay-
Second.
From Mayor Protem Murphy, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So you have that appropriated? Is there anything else? I was going to ask, any other time-sensitive items on there?
There, well, there, as has been mentioned by the budget standing committee, the, the police locker room and the community center roof are time-sensitive, only because we just, they're getting to emergency levels. But many of the other items on the list are getting to that, those emergency levels as well. So I, it definitely all is time-sensitive at this point.
I, I don't have a problem if you want to do a, a separate meeting, just to alleviate some of the issues. As I said, my, my contention is, I, and, and I'm hearing from Councilmember Hasselbrink than, that she's at one frame of mind, and, and I'm new, returning to the council, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm at the same frame of mind. If, if we're moving forward on the basis that there's no change occurring here, and that, that we have to do something, albeit, you know, rehab or whatever, if that's our commitment, then I think we, we move forward. If, if we're not under that commitment, we're just seeming, passing around, this kind of all started back in the 2007 era, and, and we're still debating it. I know at the time that I was on council before, the question was, do we want to get off this piece of property? Do we want to put it on the market? And the council voted 5-0 to go ahead and do that. Without consideration of where we move, let's, what's our property value, what can we get out of this property, and then what do we do? If that's changed, then that's fine. I, I think we're all on the same page and clearly moving forward. But if it's not changed, and it's now, we're going to stay here whether we, you know, find a lease and take over the property, and then build something on the back end of the property, that's fine too. But even if we were to do that, it means we're going to be building a new police station. If that's the focus and the direction, a whole new police station is going to be a better retention process and a, and a better recruitment process than a building that's being held up. I mean, today, it's the locker room.
Okay. So, so kind of moving just a little bit on, because we did say, you did say what you said, and I think it's, you're kind of consistent with that, and then you and I, we were on that other committee before, I know where you're coming from. So I think this, if it's good with the council, and we can bring this back sooner, I think we certainly like to take action on it. And I guess, city clerk, if you can poll us and see when we're available, and then, I think it should be a fairly simple cleanup on the report, right? Just append the CIP, and then make the math, stack up, you know, the narrative of the math, and if you put a table, that'd be really easy for me to understand, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd put a table.
And then, you know, I think we can just have a very short special meeting, and get it approved, and get those other projects moving, and I think, if we can do that, perhaps in what, early March?
That's, yeah, we can, we can do that. The sooner the better, like I said. And if I can just take a minute here, I, to answer Councilmember Gross's questions or comments, it, to me, it's a simultaneous process. We, I, my opinion is that we need to get money into the 1920 budget for a manager to oversee the project, to look at our civic center needs, and a potential for a P3 project. We're going, it's on the agenda later on tonight, we're going to go to a annual conference for P3, learn about public-private partnerships. And it's a process that we need to go through, but we need to get money into the budget to have someone oversee this, because we just, the development services director and I can't do it on our own, and we need that expertise. We are, but analyzing different options, we're looking at, we toured the city of Long Beach, and their P3 project that they have out there, we're educating ourselves on that. We had the mayor go with us on that tour. We're going to go to city of Norwalk, who has a P3 project that's out there. We're continuing to talk to developers that are interested in this type of a project, potentially submitting a request for interest down the line when we go out on, into the market, and see what the, what the options are out there, and what the interests are in doing something with these facilities. But it's, it's a simultaneous process, we just have gotten to the point where our facilities, we just can't not do anything anymore, it's just not an option. So I think the police department and recreation, community services, and finance director, and development services director, all the staff have done a good job working with the budget standing committee, and getting outstanding feedback from them in this process. And so it is definitely healthy to bring it back to the full council to, as Mayor Protem Murphy, you know, to look at what the other needs are, and do it sooner than later. But the community center roof, I mean, every time it rains, we have buckets that we're having to put on the floor to cover the new leaks, and the facilities and the police department are just continuing to deteriorate. So it's, it's a simultaneous process, but that's, just wanted to-
Okay.
-give you my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I guess we do have a few moments, I guess we want to go to closed session, if you can, so if you can take us to the closed session.
Sure, the city council, Los Alamos, will now adjourn in the closed session to discuss items four A and B as listed on the meeting agenda.
Okay. Thanks, you all.